... September 7th, time for our budget hearing this evening. And I've asked Commissioner Clyde Fleming to open us up with the invocation and the pledge.
Let's pray. Our Father be coming in your name tonight. Thank you for all your blessings you have bestowed upon us. Father, we pray that you have mercy. Blessed those that are in harm's way. Give us strength and give us a mind. Bless our state. Father, look over our country. Father, make a way. Bless us tonight as we do the county's business. We pray that you watch over and protect us. Look over our chairman. God give him strength. Oh, God give him a mind to do what's good and what's right. Father, we love you. We thank you. Bless these men that are here today with us. Keep us safe from all hurt, harm, and dangers. This we ask, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Praise the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start things off with clerk of the court, Mary Baker.
Mr. Chairman, and other commissioners, this is where that... I was going to say before you, you have a tentative... A tentative mileage rate of 9.0000. You have a proposed tentative budget of 81,532,600... $467. You have a rollback rate of 8.954 mils. And that proposed mileage rate is a .51 percent increase from the rollback rate.
At this time, we'll open up a public hearing for any constitutional officers. Have anything that they wish to add or change? If none, any outside agencies? Any county departments?
Mr. Chairman, there are two things that I need to go over with you and the board.
Okay.
If you want me to handle this under county departments, I'll just do it as administration if you like.
Sure, go ahead.
I had a phone call from the tax collector today. Mr. Hancock, can you hear me? Good. All right. I think they may have adjusted this some. I'm not sure. It seems to be working a little bit better. Anyway, I had a call from the tax collector today, and she informed me that the board is going to have to send a letter to the state indicating that we will cover any shortage if she has one in her budget. She doesn't seem to think that there will be much at all there, that it might just be a small portion of her salary. And that that letter will have to go to them soon. She didn't give me a lot of details on it. I said, "Well, I tell you what you do. Just reduce that to write and send it to me in an email." And we will have to send them a letter, but I'll look into that more. We'll gather more information. I just want to inform you of that. And again, I just got the call today, this afternoon. So if that were to occur, and if the board is obligated to do that, obviously it would require some adjustment in the contingency prior to the time that we get to the final budget hearing. So we will know more about it by then for sure. The second thing I wanted to mention to you, I just spoke to finance personnel about a minor issue associated with the leased dump trucks that we have. We had discussed with the vendors postponing the annual payment until after October 1, when we were expecting to have the new dump trucks in and make the payment on those. You know, we were going to start... We were trying to shift all these dates. And they were okay with that, but we have a small issue in that the new trucks won't be here for an extra month, so we will have a one-month payment to make. The money's in the budget because it'll either go to the vendor of the new trucks or the old ones. It doesn't make any difference. I just want you to be aware of that. So we might have to make an adjustment in a line or something that reflects that. And again, we can handle that before we get to the final budget hearing. The last thing I want to comment on is the capital improvement plan. We had all those items listed on there. You know, I'd love to have had time to put some really formal estimates together on all those numbers, but I'm just going to tell you right now that if we were to try to forecast, and I'm not recommending that we try to accomplish this, I'm just going to tell you that if we were going to try to forecast an escrow amount for all of the capital improvements that were on that list, including beginning to set something aside for a future jail whenever that year comes about, I would be trying to set aside about $2 million a year. That depends on, or would be affected a lot by, a decision at some point when each of those individual capital improvement plans are considered, how much you want to try to pay for outright, or how much you want to borrow if you're doing larger capital improvement plans and think that you might want to borrow money and spread that out over a number of years. In any event, I wanted to give you a number that I thought was a reasonable number if you were trying to begin, to begin escrowing for that. Clearly, your contingency doesn't come anywhere near that. So I'm just giving you a number, looking at that list. I think it's a decent number, but again, it's one that would be affected by any future decisions to either pay up front, or borrow money, or postpone projects, or, you know, there are just a lot of variables associated with that. So I want to share that information with you. I just felt this was probably the best time to do it.
All right. Before that gets any worse, I'll give you one second.
There's just the public wanting to speak out.
I did. And when you don't have a babysitter, you got to do what you got to do.
That's right.
All right, any other departments? Oh, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yes, sir.
I did want to make sure that the money that was in the budget this year for the renovation of X2 would be able to be rolled over so that we would be able to work on that.
Still in there.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was still in the plan.
Yeah, it was still in there.
Okay, thank you. And also, I just had a quick question. As we look at these capital improvement plans, are any of these eligible for the money through Swanee Valley Electric with... Once that money is repaid from Dowling Park Library, are there... I don't know what the ramifications for that loan money for the low interest or no-interest loans, but are any of these projects eligible for those?
I think that probably some of those, particularly infrastructure projects, would I think my first approach would be to try to obtain grants for those, though.
Yeah.
Otherwise, that funding we have to pay back, and we already paid that.
That's been paid back.
Oh, has it? Okay.
While they would qualify, our first approach would be to try to obtain grants.
Yeah, definitely. Okay. Just wondering if that would be something...
Any other departments? This time we'll open up a public comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Hearing none. At this time, we will recess out of the tentative budget hearing, enter into the solid waste collection and disposal benefit unit board. Turn it to Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, the proposed household assessment rate is $130, which is no increase over the current year, actually. Says prior year, but that's... Prior year is actually the current year.
Open it up for any public comment on the trash assessment. Hearing none. What's the wishes of the board?
Closed comment.
Closed comment. Now, what's the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve it at $130. Got a motion by Commissioner... Who was that, Fleming?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We'll close, close that hearing. This time, we'll open, open the Swanee County Municipal Service Benefit Unit for Fire Protection Board hearing. Turn our attention back to Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, the proposed assessment for residential is $100. Non-residential is proposed at 12 cents per square foot up to 179,400 feet. Land less than 160 acres per parcel is proposed at $17.91. Land greater than 160 acres up to a maximum of 640 acres is proposed at 14 cents per acre. And again, this is a proposed rate that is not an increase over the current year's rate.
This time, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to comment on the fire rates? Hearing none. At this time, I'll close public comment. What's the wishes of the board?
Second.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson. Second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This time, we'll close public hearing. This time, we'll go back into the tentative budget hearing, and we'll vote on the recommendations from the fire board. They'll have a motion to approve the recommendations that we just made as the fire board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions. Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, next is solid waste recommendation. They'll have a motion to approve the recommendation we just made on solid waste.
Make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Hale. Second by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is getting confusing, going in and out of these different...
That's why it's typed out.
Do I?
That's why it's typed out.
I know, but it's still... Okay, this time, we're going to recess out of the tentative budget hearing and go into the municipal service benefit for a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution confirming the assessment role for the municipal services district known as 78th Street slash 68th Street Terrace Municipal Service Benefit Unit for 2017. At this time, we'll open public, public hearing or comments on that. Hearing none. We'll close public comment. Mr. Harris, this is one of those roads that we're still...
This is MSBU for road improvements. It's been ongoing. They're still paying that off. I don't know how many more years are left on there, but some of the parcels had already paid their portion off, so there are fewer parcels paying in right now.
Mr. Chairman, can I have a question concerning that?
What if, like the other night, Tuesday night, we approved the municipal services in that
district? What if someone out of another district were to come after the fact? Would they have to wait till the following year?
Are you talking about into an existing MSBU, or...
Just say if a community, they have a dirt road that want to pay.
Well, they want to come in and apply for one?
Apply for one.
Well, it would have to be structured... No, it would show up once it's adopted. You don't have to postpone everything until the budget hearings come up the following year.
Okay.
No, once the board adopts an MSBU, you go ahead and implement that because you've got a lender in place that it doesn't create a general debt obligation to the county. It's levied against the parcels that are involved.
Okay, so what I'm saying is not limiting the services district known as 78th Street or 76th Terrace, it's not limited to them only?
No.
Okay.
No, no. This is the only one that continues to be set up right now. Others have been paid off, so this one's left from some older MSBU's. But whatever time of year it happens to be, once they're adopted and they're implemented and constructed and funded and all that's in place, the billing will follow because it'll be sent out with the tax bills. So that's when they will make their payment.
Okay.
And it's all structured around that. The finance plan is predicated on that.
All right. Well, I'm good. I just want to make sure.
Mr. Chairman, I have... Brings up a question. Something you said, Mr. Harris? Or maybe it was something you said, Mr. ... Yeah, one or the other. I think it was you about there's less payments coming in. Did you say that?
There are fewer parcels right now, but only because when you set these up, property owners have an opportunity to prepay or pay up front rather than be a part of the finance plan. There's a benefit to them because they're not paying the compounded interest on the loan, so it's a little bit cheaper if they pay it up front. Then those that aren't paying it up front are picking up their proportionate share of the interest costs associated with the loan.
So this, this resolution is a continuation of one that's already there, and we have to do this every year for every MSBU?
Until this one's paid off. And the others, as they get, come in, they'll do the same thing for whatever number of years are put into place in the resolution when it's adopted.
Thank you.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions? I have a motion to approve.
Motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions. Second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. At this time, we'll go back into the tentative budget hearing and vote on the MSBU recommendation. They'll have a motion to approve the recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming. Who was the second? Got a second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. At this time, the board, if you got any changes that you want to make, it would be now that we need to advise the budget office of what those changes might be. Might have been a bad idea. Any, any changes in the budget that any commissioners were wanting to make?
This is, Mr. Chairman, this isn't specifically dealing with all of the contingent... All of the reserves and the wish lists and stuff like that, is it, or is it not?
They have, this time, if there's any changes you want to make anywhere, this would be the time to do it. We're pretty much at the end of this hearing.
Inclusive of the, inclusive of the wish list?
Mm-hmm.
Then we still don't have information on the...
Yeah, let me comment on that, if I could. The trucks. We just obtained the rest of the information, had them rewrite a lot of that stuff so it was easier to understand. And my thought on that is that we have a couple of weeks between now and the adoption hearing for the final budget. I'd like to get with each of you individually, and we'll go over all of that. Some of you have a lot of questions, others may not have as many, but it'll give us a better opportunity so we don't turn the whole public hearing into a workshop then. But we've got all that information now documented. We can sit down with you, discuss it, give you copies of it. And then after we meet, if you have additional questions, we'll have plenty of time to get answers. And then you can come back and y'all can discuss that before you entertain the actual budget. Because at that point, at that point, it isn't affecting your budget numbers because those numbers are already in the budget. The only thing it would affect would be establishing the expenditure line of those budgets. Otherwise, they're going into contingency. So it isn't altering your budget numbers at all.
So we got to the final budget here to alter?
That's right.
Anything else?
I'll answer my question.
What's our actual contingency number now?
Nine...
Is it a 916?
916.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that with the adjustments?
Yes, that's with all the adjustments that were previously discussed and agreed upon by the board.
That's right here. That's inclusive of all those adjustments?
Yeah, right.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're understood.
I wanted to ask y'all to consider, I had met with the property appraiser, and in next year's budget, they're looking at updating their computer system. Right now, they don't have an estimate on what that's going to cost, but I'm sure it's going to be costly. And since we had a good reserve in our contingency this year, I was hoping that the board might set aside maybe $200,000 in a line for some money to get that project started next year if we decide to move forward with it. If we don't, it's in a line, it's just in a reserve line.
Can we move it back if we don't?
Yeah, we don't. But I'd hate to see it come in at a three or four, $500,000 cost next year and us not have anything set aside to do it. And that system's an old system, and they've got one guy in the state that runs it, and he's looking to retire. That kind of oversees it and does all the work on it. So it will be coming to a time where they need to upgrade that.
Do we have an estimate based on what you think it would cost?
Mm-mm.
Mary, do you have any clue?
I do know that they... Their system, there are a lot of upgrades that they're going to have to do on that system. But as far as, as far as Mr. Jenkins, that might talk with us, as far as we go and help them from time to time on their IT, he has an outside person.
So basically, there's like one person that knows what's going on, and he's fixing to leave, and that's his baby, and nobody else is going to understand.
It's been under that same system for, I don't know, I mean...
Is there a better... There's probably a better, newer system out there.
There's several of them out there, and they've been meeting with them, going through, looking at different ones, and it's in the infancy stages. I just happened to be in there on something else and overheard them talking about it and figured if it was going to be a big cost coming into next year, while we had some money set aside, that it wouldn't hurt to go ahead and put that back.
I can tell y'all from experience, I have a system at SVTA that's, one person was pretty much the, the person knew everything, and it's an old system, and this person left JTA, and there's a lot of glitches, and there's a lot of issues, and we're having more and more as time goes on. And I'm looking for a new system myself for what we're doing. So if you've got somebody that's going to retire, that's their baby, we may ought to look as a county for a new system that your IT people would understand completely moving forward, and we'd be better. So I'd be in favor of putting some money aside to do that because I'm running into the same problem.
I mean, he's gave them plenty of heads up that he's looking, looking to retire. He's not leaving them high and dry, but I mean, you never know what's down the road. I'm just trying to look, look ahead so that we don't get surprised about next year.
I'm okay with that. There's no estimate at all, though? There's no ceiling?
Is it a web-based system, or is it, is it the website, too? Like GSMA?
It's going to be their GS, the whole...
Everything.
Everything.
If we set that money aside, and they decide not to do anything.
That money's still sitting in there. You move right back into your reserve or to your contingency.
At what point in time? At the end of whatever?
When we get to the... You would know, we'd basically be setting this money aside.
Just for that.
This time next year, when we go into the budget workshops, if he comes in and asks for that request, at that point in time, he should have a dollar amount where he knows what it's going to cost.
Sure.
And then we would decide whether we wanted to do it or not. Just kind of like the sheriff did this year, coming in knowing that he wanted, needed a new system, and here's a dollar amount. Just seeing it out there coming next year, while we had a good contingency, I didn't figure it would hurt to set some aside.
Mr. Chairman, does the property officer's office have a reserve? Do they deal with any reservers by statute?
Every year, when they, at the end of the year, when they have money left over, it turns back into the county budget. And they have turned money back in, I believe, just about every year since I've been on the board.
I make a motion that we move...
Not a motion, no.
That we reserve, set aside $200,000 out of reserves. For that, potentially for that, and we'll see what the future is. Contingency.
Reduce the contingency by $200,000 and establish a line, a reserve line for the property appraiser.
Do I need that in a motion, or can we just get a, just a consensus with the board?
You can do it by consensus.
Consensus is all...
You've got to come back with it.
It's all under the same number, so when we move on, the number will be fine. We just need to make a consensus to create the line item.
Okay.
So consensus.
I think everybody's in agreement on that. Only other question that I had in here was in the outside, not the outside agencies, but the, the request we had from you, Mr. Harris, on the three new trucks is, I think we, we had, what was it, four-wheel drive crew cabs?
Right.
Four-door trucks?
Yes. Yeah, the plan there is that we're going to be asking for more of those because I've got these tractor crews all over the place now. We're starting these trucks out first with the supervisors because they're running all over between all these crews every day. When we've got a few years on them, the plan is to roll them over and put them with those crews. I need more of them right now, but I can't come in here and ask for six, eight of them at one time.
No, I got you.
That's the plan. We've just got these big tractor crews with a pickup truck.
Makes sense. You're asking for the, you're asking for the four doors now because you will roll them into a crew type thing in a few years where several people...
Well, right now, they'll start out with the supervisors because they put more miles on them. When the crews get them, they'll drive out there and they'll park them. I need those crew cabs now for them, but we've had such a difficult time buying those from, surplus from other governments. I think it took us two or three years to get one for Catherine, because they're just not as available as the little two-door trucks are. So I'll take these initial ones, give them to the supervisors that are running around checking on these crews all day and run around looking at work orders and scheduling.
So the, we're talking about, when you're, the supervisors you're talking about, is that Mike, LT, and Eric?
Right.
So they're going to use a four-door cab to drive around checking on people? Four-door, four-by-four?
Well, they're not just checking. A lot of times, they're picking people up. They're taking people to the hospital on a workers' comp claim. They're doing a number of that. They're carrying, they're carrying transits around in the backseat, plans and lots of stuff. That's their office. So they're using it as a full-fledged office. They don't have offices in the building like they used to. We kind of escorted them out into pickup trucks about five years ago. So there are full offices in that truck. They need a four-door truck. And once we take that truck away from them, we're going to need another four-door to give to whoever the supervisors are, and these trucks, then, once they've got some miles on them, will go to the crews. And these trucks then, once they've got some miles on them, will go to the crews.
The, the board agreed on it earlier. I was just having some heartburn over it, so I was going to bring it back up. But if the board's still not agreeing on it, then we'll leave it there.
We desperately need them.
I just, the only thing I didn't agree upon was, I think the assumption was we would use all the four doors for, for hauling crews around, not for hauling equipment around. I'm sure they're hauling something around, hauling it around right now in the back seat of our, behind their seats or wherever they're followed. That's what pickup trucks are for, is for hauling, just see that we can spend less money.
I, I've rolled with, with the supervisors and I think they're very much needed. It's uncomfortable when you got to lean up or get out of the truck to move some of your stuff around and I, it's just uncomfortable, I guess, for a man my size. But some of the supervisors ain't all the same size, but I think it's very uncomfortable. I think it's needed, very much needed.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it.
I mean, I've got a crew cabin, it's always full of something, so.
Yeah, I was just, I was looking at the cost of them and thinking, I'm not disputing that they needed trucks. I was just thinking a two-door, four-wheel drive.
I guess the fact is it's going to be rolled into an actual crew with other people, multi-people riding it in a few years is what I was getting at. And that makes sense to me.
Let me just tell you, on an everyday basis, the people that are driving, the best candidates in the road department, for instance, that are best suited for a two-door truck are the guys that are driving graders. They got a fuel tank in the back, they drive out there, fuel their equipment, drive it back, park it while they're running the graders. But all of these other crews that we have are larger crews, three- and four-man crews, riding out there in two-door pickup trucks or a cab and a half. I've got some pretty good-sized men trying to squeeze in some of these things. But at the same time, I recognize that they're driving them out there and parking them. While the supervisors are running all over, all day long, checking all of the calls that come into our, our office every day. See if those are legitimate requests for work on dirt roads and trees and ditches and culverts. And they carry all of their paperwork and whatever else they're using. That's their office, period. They used to have offices in the building. But they take everything they need for measuring, for flagging, for painting, marking things, laying things out for those crews before they get there. All of their paperwork, all of their files, because those files will then come back into the office and be recorded in the computer. So that's, that's the supervisor's office. But I thought was we'd buy the new ones, we let them go ahead and put some miles on them because they're driving a lot of miles. And then we take them from them, give them to the crews who are going to drive far fewer miles. We get many more years out of the truck. And it serves the purposes of the supervisor and the crews. Like I said, I wish I could buy all these four-door trucks with the crews today. But I, we're wearing out, the worn-out trucks. The trucks that your supervisors are driving today were bought as surplus trucks from someone else. Most of them Sarasota County. They had quite a few miles on them when we bought them. They've got a lot more on them now. And we're just trying to keep the business going.
But I think, I think the board's not wanting the changes, so we'll move on. Does anyone else have anything they want to change or look at?
Here, none. Next thing is to vote on the tentative millage rate, tentative millage rates, nine mils.
Motion approved.
Second.
We got a motion by Commissioner Fleming. Mr. Hale, second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Vote on approved tentative budget, 81,532,467 dollars.
I make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions. That was second.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. That pretty much ends the tentative budget hearing. Is there anything else, Mr. Harris, that you have?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this has very little to do with the budget. Because we're here, I just want to let you know, you and I spoke with this. And I spoke to Mr. Baker today and lots of other, lots of people today. The decision was made to go ahead and close the county offices on Monday, with the exception of the road department, fire rescue, possibly some people in administration. Personally, I believe that there's going to be very little impact here. And certainly, that's my prayer, like it is everyone else's. But the logistical difficulty of trying to communicate with everyone because of the time that this thing may come in Sunday night, Monday, if we did have an issue, if models changed, a storm came through here, I don't need all these extra people on the roads and in offices where they're probably not going to take calls or have too many customers if we had an event. So we're going to wait it out on Monday and take it back up on Tuesday. But all of your road department personnel should be working on fire rescue. I just needed to announce that.
Good idea.
That and if anybody wants sandbags, there's dirt.
Yeah, we did place sand over here. We informed everyone at the EOC meeting earlier today, informed the city of that as well. So we've got sand there. If it runs down, we'll put some more out there.
Anything else?
I don't know if y'all knew that they made a mandatory evacuation also for Miami-Dade besides Monroe County. So that's more people headed this direction. Some were just under a million people there. And also the highway patrol, you know, they're going to put most of their resources where the impact of the hurricane hits. But the biggest impact to us up here is all those people going to be coming to I-10 and I-75 and the resources will be worn thin up here as far as policing, all that. So just, just everybody try to be good neighbors and good people when you see all this stuff happening. But if you see things that need to be reported, get the local law enforcement, let them know because Sam's going to be stretched. Go ahead. Seen that? Yeah.
More impact, less wind, probably, as things ever land.
Just so the board knows, I met with Sheriff this morning at 9:00 and we went ahead and signed the Declaration of Emergency that we approved at the last board meeting. So it's signed and now we're, we're under that, so.
If nothing else, we'll.
Just a, just clarification on that's, the, the public notices will go out tomorrow or later tonight, notifications. I got an email from Kimberly today, but she said it, it will be, they will put out a public statement. I just want to make clarify because I'm, I want to post whenever she puts the public statement out. It says, not for public use, announcements will, announcement will be put out shortly. And she sent the site, the situation report. Okay, thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll close public hearing. Thank you all for coming out.